All right, and good evening. Going to go ahead and call this meeting to order? And we are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. We have some individuals from Mason Elementary who are going to help lead today. All right, welcome everyone to tonight's regular board meeting. Can I get an adoption of the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, motion and second. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye, motion passes. Next up, we have 2.01 Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam President. Welcome and good evening to the Board of Education and all of our guests today. First off, I want to recognize, we had the Mayor's Character Breakfast this morning, so we had two individuals who helped run that event. So Dr. Carlson emceed portion of it, so thank you. And Officer Cantrell, who's at many of our board members, board meetings, sang the National Anthem just beautifully, so thank you to both of you. Mayor's Character Breakfast, if you can go in the future, I'd advise you to go. It's so heartwarming, the speeches are great. And I would say maybe two-thirds of the cuff were our staff members and kids being recognized. So it's our whole community coming together to recognize people for, for signifying different characters. So we had a couple of teachers, a bus driver, and so many kids recognized, so kudos to all our winners. Congratulations, Lisa McNorris-Sarah Courtney, for being named the 2025 Smart Mayor VFW Citizen Education Teacher Award winner. This award honors three exceptional teachers whose curriculum focuses on citizenship education and their dedication to students. She will be recognized at the state ceremony on February 8th in St. Louis, Missouri, so congratulations to Sarah. Congratulations to LSR 7's Cyber Patriot teams that participated in the recent state round of the Cyber Patriot competitions. Cyber Patriot is a national youth cyber education program created by the Air Force Association that focuses on inspiring students towards careers in cybersecurity and other STEM careers. LSR 7 had five high school teams participating in the Platinum Division. One of those teams came in first, another came in third. In the Gold Division, one of LSR 7's high school teams came in second. We also had four middle school teams compete. Summit Lakes took home second place, and East Trails took home third. All the middle school teams and one of the high school teams will advance to the semifinal competition later this month, so good luck to them. Congratulations to our Summit Technology Academy Environmental Science teacher, Caitlin Edwards, so this is at Paradise Park. She was just named one of Missouri's Outstanding Beginning Teachers by the Missouri Association of Colleges for Teacher Education. Every two years, the Association honors exemplary first and second year teachers from pre-K through 12th grade across the state for their work. So congratulations to Caitlin, she's created a great program out there. Before I go to updates, there's another one I want to brag, and I see we have Dr. Andrews in the back, so he'll appreciate hearing this as a former employee here. So if you look at June of, the June 30th of 2020, our fund balances at that time were 28%. We ended last year with a fund balances at 28%, so very fiscally sound. But at the same time, we've increased programming and opportunities. And for the first time, our annual performance report is number one in Jackson and Cass County, the counties we serve. I can't find the last time we've been number one. The annual performance reports, what DESI gives us based on our test scores, graduation rates, things like that. So kudos to everyone for living within our means, but yet increasing performance. It's great to be number one, and congratulations for all the hard work. Mark your calendars, dates for elementary, middle school, summer school are out. K through 5 grades will convene May 28th and run until June 30th, unless we have another winter storm, Blair. And 6th and 8th grade will run May 28th to June 27th. That information was sent out today in the R7 News, and more information will follow up on non-Peach Jar flyer platform. Summit Technology Academy will host its open nights to provide prospective students and their families an opportunity to see all that STA has to offer. Each open house is 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and of course loaded at, located at the Missouri Innovation Campus just down the road here. The first one is January 16th, which is right now. Backup snow day is 30th, I don't think they need that. And the other one is going to be February 6th. The backup snow day would be February 20th. As part of our commitment to incorporating the voices and perspectives of our entire community into the decision-making processes, we are excited to announce the upcoming DESI Caregiver Survey approved by the State of Missouri. The purpose of this survey is to gather parent insights into LSR 7's school experiences, identify areas of continuous improvement. Details for the survey starts, it started this last Tuesday, and it ends on January 23rd at 11:59 PM. And finally, kindergarten kickoff is this, coming up in March 6th. It's a Thursday from 5:00 to 6:00 PM at all of our elementary locations and for our 7 online academy. Children turning 5 by July 31st, 2025 are eligible to begin kindergarten in the 25-26 school year. The kindergarten kickoff event is an open house in your anticipated school and your first opportunity to get to know your principal, staff, and buildings. You can also sign up for kindergarten kickoff newsletter campaign on the district website. That concludes the Superintendent's Report. Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Buck. Next up, we have 3.01 School Spotlight, Mason Elementary.
Okay, I will start off by introducing ourselves. I am Ashley Emming. I'm the principal here at Mason Elementary. And this is Kelsey Sanders, our Assistant Principal. And we're here to talk to you about our Fun Fridays at Mason Elementary. So we kind of came up with the name Fun Fridays. Okay, so we created a schedule at Mason that every Friday afternoon at 3:15, we have a consistent schedule and our building shuts down. And so we rotate on those Fridays between families, clubs, assemblies, and then classroom community time. And so this has just been a really great way for us to increase sense of belonging and tendence, have fun on Fridays. And so one of our favorite things about them is just seeing all of our students and all of our kids have a lot of fun together. We also started a tradition that just kind of happened, and we have Friday morning dance parties. So in our kindergarten and first grade pod, you can see here, we have a speaker that comes up and they dance every single morning. And it is just the best, most heartwarming way to start your Friday at school. And so we have some students here, we have Leah Gordon, we have Maggie Maddick, and Jaden. And so they're going to tell you about one of our four rotations on Fridays.
At our school, every student is a part of a school family, made up from kids to kindergarten to 5th grade. You stick with the same family and family leader at Mason, at your time at Mason, which is super cool. It makes our school feel like one big family. My favorite part is getting to see the, from the kids from different grades.
One Friday a month, we have clubs. We got to choose our club based on what we like or want to try out. There are all kinds of cool options like arts and crafts, coding, sewing, karaoke, cheer, and tons more, so there's something for everyone. Clubs are a time to do things we love or try something new and hang out with other people who like the same stuff as us. In sewing club, they teach us how to sew. When you figure it out, you can move on to the pro level and sew whatever you want. I made a mini pillow.
One of the best things about Fridays is our monthly assemblies. It's a time for the whole school to come together, have fun, and celebrate. These assemblies are super exciting because we cheer on our friends for their hard work and achievements. There's the Golden Trashcan Award, honor roll certificates, Student of the Month, and so much more. It's so cool to see everyone getting recognized for their hard work, kindness, and all the great stuff they do. In addition to recognizing achievements, we also have fun assemblies throughout the year. A few examples of assemblies we've had are winter sing-alongs, cultural arts, and Black History Month. My favorite thing about assemblies is seeing kids get different awards and celebrating each other.
Finally, we have community time with our class. Each grade level gets to choose what they want to do on this Friday. Some grades do buddies, others have classroom community time, or even throw compliment parties. It's always so much fun to spend this time with our class. Buddies are especially awesome because we get to hang out with younger students, be leaders, and help them out. Plus, it's fun to visit our old teachers in classrooms. In 5th grade, we are buddies with kindergartners, and my favorite part is getting to know my buddy and doing fun activities with him.
And that is our school spotlight. Thank you, guys. Okay, and next up, we have our Volunteer of the Year for Mason Elementary. And we have Ms. Cheryl Jones for Mason. So I'm going to read a few words about Cheryl. Cheryl is a retired teacher who has been volunteering at Mason Elementary for 17 years in Deanna's Room. She is dedicated to working with children and has a passion for making a positive impact on their lives. Not only does Ms. Jones help support students with their academics, but she also shares her passion for gardening with them by teaching them how to care for the environment through planting flowers and beautifying our secret garden. The students at Mason enjoy learning about nature through these hands-on experiences with her. We love getting to see her smile each week at Mason and know that we can always count on her to help support our students. So we want to say thank you for everything that you do for us at Mason.
If you two could join us up front with the board, we'd get a picture with you if you...
All right, next, we have our Secondary School Spotlight, Pleasantly Middle School.
Good evening. Before I get going too much, there are about eight Tigers out there and some sponsors. If you can make your way up here, I'll kind of speak while you make your way up. We are very excited to be here tonight. We are bringing in, oh, it even popped up there, great, the Pleasantly Middle School BBQ Club. This club provided dinner tonight to the Board of Education, so... I'm very excited to have them share their experiences, a little bit about the club, and just kind of welcome you into what they're doing every day, so thank you.
Hello, everybody. I'm Officer Bush. I am actually the SRO at Pleasantly Middle School, and I get the opportunity to kind of head the grilling club over at Pleasantly. It actually has been a lot of fun. These kids are pretty amazing. But hopefully, we can keep it going. It can be kind of pricey, so we definitely appreciate all the support we get. And that's enough for me. I know you guys want to hear from the kids, so I'll let them finish up.
The first thing we cook every time we get together is we cook hot dogs, and it's really fun. It's a good way to like get ready to learn how to use the grill, and it's a good confidence builder for everyone. And we get to eat them afterwards.
After successfully grilling hot dogs, students move on to burgers. They split in, they split into four groups. Each group has to make a shopping list, everything they need, seasoning toppings, et cetera. The groups then complete to determine who made the best burger. Judging is provided by the teacher, admit front office staff members. We then let the students vote on what to cook next. The usual winner is breakfast on the Blackstone, but we have done fajitas and chicken kebabs.
The grilling club wanted to give back and voted to feed LSPD patrol officers lunch one day. The students took shifts and grilled for over two hours.
The lunch provided was a burger, chips, cookie, and drink. The kids did a great job planning and grilling. I was told several times how great lunch was.
The lunch was entirely student-run, fostering teamwork, leadership, and service. It was a great, it was great to see how much the students enjoyed running the whole event, and they did a great job. We do face some challenges due to time constraints. We have limited ability to explore deeper grilling and or smoking techniques, but we are happy to provide meaningful skills and experiences.
The PLMS Grilling Club continues to provide valuable lessons in cooking, safety, and community involvement, setting students up for success and enjoyment in their lives outside of school.
My favorite part of grilling club was making lots of memories with my friends, and it's given me lots of skills and experiences to help make more memories with my friends and family.
My favorite part about grilling club is learning to use the grill and how to cook certain things. I've also been taught how much seasoning to put on stuff. That explains why my stuff tasted so bad at home, but... I would like to thank Mr. Barker, Mr. Payne, Dr. Linquist, and Officer Bush for giving me the opportunity to cook on the grill. Thank you.
And I'd just like to add on to that, we have different disciplines we're working on. So there's like the Blackstone, the Smoker, propane, and then our pellet, which is what we use tonight to make all the pulled pork. So these kids are phenomenal. They're very safe with hot objects, and just so thankful they can be here for you, so.
I just want to say, the pulled pork was amazing.
It was delicious.
So good, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. I know a couple have practices they have to get to, so they're going to scoot right on out, almost all of them. Second up, let me see if I can, there we go. Second up, we have our Volunteer of the Month, and really for the year, Pleasantly Middle School. This person has revitalized a PTA that was almost nonexistent. Actually, when I started at Pleasantly Middle School, nonexistent, stepped in, took the reins, has partnered with every person throughout the process, helped us deliver presents to 34 students with large budgets to help support those families, has helped us with a car that probably should not have been loaded with that much liquid from Sam's Club. I mean, every seat down, floor to ceiling, all the way out, we were unloading it going, who put all these in here? That was for a dance. Even as far as, we have Tiger Fan Days and students stay after school. Well, the concession stand is an important part of that experience, and she is always present, trucking in new items, sharing things with kids, just sitting out there talking with them. So I would like to recommend and award Stephanie Kratz as our Volunteer of the Year.
Next up, we have item 4.01 Public Comment.
We appreciate your attendance and your willingness to speak to the board. Please remember that the board does not respond to public comments during the meeting, but may ask clarifying questions. Your comments will be noted by the board and administration, and if appropriate, we will discuss further action with the superintendent. Only those who have signed up prior to the meeting will be allowed to address the board. Pursuant to Board Policy BDDH, we will be limiting all comments to no more than seven people with a limit of three minutes each. You may not transfer any of your time to other speakers. Your allotted three minutes will be counted down on the screen. Please conclude your comments when the timer expires. Your comments must align with the subject described in your written request to speak and must directly relate to the business or operations of the district. Your comments may not discuss individual employees or students in the district regardless of whether your comments speak of them in a positive or negative light. Any such comments should be directed to the superintendent, who will then determine if further action is needed. Because the board does not and cannot impose age-based restrictions on who attends reviews board meetings, and because children of all ages frequently do attend board meetings, comments may not include obscenities or sexually explicit content. Furthermore, comments may not include physical threats of physical or emotional harm, or threaten in any way the safety of others. We also recommend all those in the audience that Board Policy BDDH prohibits the use of signs or audible responses. This includes applause, cheers, or jeers. If you are in the audience and wish to respond in some way to a public comment, you may contact the board or superintendent after the meeting. Your comments must be directed only to the board because the purpose of public comment is to bring something to the attention of the board. You may not speak to or interact in any way with any person in the audience. When your name is called, go to the podium, clearly state your name and the organization you represent, if any. J.C. Layman.
Hello, my name is J.C. I am a 2nd grader at LSE. I am a child that likes being at a small school because whenever I'm there, it's more comfortable. The teachers all greet me by my name whenever I walk in, even if I have not been in their class before. All of the teachers are very nice, and I know they would help me if I needed it. I go to a special class where I just focus on what is good in my life. Ms. Bauer is the teacher, and she comforts me more than anyone else. My life is already hard with divorced parents, and she helps me with that, too. Westview will not have her, and that will make my life harder. I am also worried about not being able to talk to someone like her. If we combined with Westview, there are lots of kids who have things in their background, and the teachers care about them all. But if we combine with Westview, I might not be able to see Ms. Bauer because there would be so many kids that need to doctor. During summer school, I am building with at least four teachers in each grade level, and it is overwhelming for me. There's always a lot going on. I am quiet, do my work, and help others. During summer school, sometimes it feels like the teachers have so many other kids to focus on, and it feels like they don't always see me. One of those things, one of the things that I love about LSE is that we walk to many places in our community. In kindergarten, we walked to the fire station, and every year, we walked to City Hall to trick or treat. Also, Cougar Choir walks to the Mayor's Christmas tree lighting. I am worried that if we combine with Westview, we might not be able to participate in these traditions. I am looking forward to the new farmer's market being, being right across the street. LSE students can partner with the community at the farmer's market to have great real-world learning experiences. Moving us away from LSE will take away those chances. LSE's location means all the children don't have to walk or ride their bikes very far to get to school. Even parents that drive don't have to drive that far. That is important because it means that all of the students have a chance to be in clubs and activities that meet before and after school, even if their parents aren't able to take them. We know about Mason's future-ready learning spaces, and I am so glad that those kids have what they need to learn. LSE is a different school with different students and different needs. We are not Mason. My dad lives at Lake Ladawana, and I could actually go to Mason, but I prefer LSE. There's nothing wrong with our school other than the roof. I would be very sad if you closed my school. Our teachers work very hard to teach the kids all kinds of things. My mom is a teacher, and she loves the school, and I do, too. That is why I disagree with closing LSE, and I hope the community that is formed will carefully consider what is best for the LSE community. I hope the board, and especially Dr. Buck and Dr. Sheldon, will consider their ideas in good faith, so that's why you should not close LSE.
Kristen Grubbs.
My name is Kristen Grubbs, and I'm here to address the ballot issues coming up in April. Decisions at last month's meeting have confirmed the upcoming bond issue asking our community to hand over another $225 million for facilities projects. LSR 7 voters will be put to task to decide whether to trust our district with their hard-earned money after being blindsided in November with a possible school closure. Tonight, at the, tonight, the board will discuss whether to put yet another tax increase on this same ballot through a proxy waiver. Since the setting, since the setting of the tax rate at the September 26th meeting rejected an increase in taxes that normally contributes to salaries, there's been community concern about pay raises. I've been told that when the board rejected the higher tax rate, they essentially flipped the bird to the staff, an image partnered with lamentations about salaries not increasing for two years. A sunshine request in comparison between these year, this year's and last year's budgets confirmed that this year's amount budgeted for salaries is not only unharmed, but from previous year, it is in fact 5.4 million more. In other words, funds have already been allocated for pay raises this fiscal year. Perhaps next fiscal year may stagnate, but this year will not. If pay raises are the proposed reason for placing a proxy waiver on the ballot in April, voters are being misled. This district is already asking voters to approve a continued tax to cover bond projects, calling it a no-tax-rate increase. To be clear, voting yes on the bond issue indeed prevents taxes from decreasing as they would when the previous bonds get paid off. A yes vote means voters want to continue paying a tax that would otherwise end. District staff salaries, salary increases have already been accounted for in this fiscal year's budget, so why mislead voters into paying more in taxes through a proxy waiver? Have you considered the negative effect this could have on the bond issue passing? Have you thought about all the maintenance that's been deferred from some of our district's buildings for years? Or the buildings in our district that for some incomprehensible reason aren't even ADA compliant? Despite my feelings about how the 225 million was figured, or the misleading advertising on the bond issue, I understand that there are buildings in our district with desperate need, in desperate need of work. I wish that all of those in need were on the project list. I digress. If you too see the importance of bond money being approved by voters, I strongly recommend that you throw out the idea of adding a proxy waiver to the April ballot. After the tax disaster with the county and recently the LSE debacle, transparency is severely lacking and trust in government authorities is too. Asking too much of the voters right now may cause undesired failure on all fronts.
Thank you. Next up, we have 5.01 Board Committee Reports. And let's start with Board Member Haley.
Okay, in the last month, I attended the Board Policy Meeting. And then earlier this week, we had the Finance Committee Meeting. Mr. Holder, there wasn't a lot of activity based on this time of year with holidays and everything, so there's just not a lot of activity to report on the Finance Committee, but those were the two committees that I had access to.
Thank you. Board Member Miller?
My committee was Board Policy Committee for this month, so that's all.
Thank you. Board Member Garrett?
I didn't have any committee meetings yet, so, no, nothing new to report.
Thank you. Vice President Eslic?
Just Board Leadership Meeting with you and the Finance Committee Meeting, so lots of vacation time, so.
Thank you. Board Member Myers?
Yeah, we had the Team Lee Summit meeting today with a fairly robust conversation about different employee groups and where we might be headed for a contract for the upcoming school year.
Thank you. Board Member Johnson?
I guess I also attended Team Lee Summit. Did all for what Ms. Myers said.
Thank you. All right, and I attended the Board Leadership Meeting, and then I also attended the MSBA AI in Education webinar. And a reason that I would like to bring that up is that our student representatives are currently dis- are currently discussing the topic of AI in education, and they will be coming back to share their input very soon. So I'm looking forward to that. Also did want to mention the Lee Summit Cares Mayor's Character Breakfast that happened this morning. It was already mentioned earlier today, but that was just a really great event, so I want to thank everyone that took part in that. Next up, we have item 6.01, approving transfer of funds. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the transfer of $5,973,093.72 from the General Fund to Special Revenue Fund.
Second.
All right, motion and second. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next, we have item 6.02, approving the Treasurer's Report and Payment of the Bills. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the Treasurer's Report and the Payment of the Bills.
Second.
All right, motion and second. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we have the Consent Agenda, 7.01 through 7.1. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the Consent Agenda items as presented.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, motion and second. Did you need clarity on who said that? Got it, okay. All right, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Next up, we have item 8.01, Economic Development Council Memo of Understanding and School Grant. Can I get, should we start with a motion? Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the Economic Development Council Memo of Understanding and the School Grant as presented.
Second.
All right, motion and second. Do we have questions or comments? Board Member Miller.
Thank you, President Foley. I'm the one who pulled this one because I just had some follow-up questions that I wanted some clarification on, and so, as we all know, that the EDC has had a long partnership with the district and dating back to, this MOU said 1985, but I looked at some of them and said 1986.
It started in 1985 at Miller Park, actually.
Okay. And I absolutely acknowledge the benefits that the EDC provides to the city of Lee Summit. So I just had a couple of additional questions than the ones I already submitted. My first one was who, and I think these are for Dr. Buck, but I don't know, yeah, who makes up the executive committee for the EDC?
I don't have the charter right in front of me, but I can send that to you. But it's a smaller group, and what they've done with the new charter is they de-emphasize that it's only for emergencies at that executive. They want a broader board, the board is bigger and more diverse with small businesses, large businesses, and has a couple council members on there as well from the city since they're paying over $250,000, $300,000 here in a couple of years. So exec would only be in an emergency situation they would meet.
Okay. And will that committee, the executive committee, are those still the ones, even though it's been reorganized, are those still the ones that will be deciding, like, who's hiring the next president?
The whole board will, the entire board.
Okay. And this is a follow-up to one of the questions that I had asked. How many LSR-7 families have jobs as a result of the EDC developments?
So I can pull up old presentations, say how many jobs. I could not tell you if those jobs, their zip codes are in Lee Summit School District or Blue Springs School District or Pleasant Hill, but we can pull up old presentations and show you how many jobs those projects brought in.
Okay, so the board can receive that data if we...
Yep, if you go back to the December of 2022 presentation, you'll see jobs on those slides for each one of the projects. I think there was four different projects that that presentation talked about, and it'll show how many jobs were either created from a new business moving in or a business expanding.
Okay, and I did go back to that meeting to, like, review it, so I'll look at the slide presentation, thank you. Do you know from that presentation, does the data show us how many of those LSR-7 families are receiving a livable wage directly connected to those positions?
Usually, when they show their projects, they'll talk about how many jobs and the average wage that those jobs will bring. So for example, there's one we finished second on, maybe three or four years ago, where the average job, it was like 120 jobs, but the average job was $85,000. So they'll do that every single time. Sometimes they'll show a range, but a lot of times, it just shows the average salary it'll bring. So when they're fully functioning, which they have not been for the last two years, they'll have 20 or 30, I would like to see at least 30, requests for proposals that they're engaging with, and engaging with KCADC and the city of Lee Summit to try to help bring jobs here.
Jobs, okay. Thank you. And my next question was, was the board expanded, did it expand under the new structure?
Quite a bit, yes.
And how many new appointments were there?
I think there were nine, and I think there was a request, if I remember right, it's nine. I think there was a request from everyone who has been a past member, do you want to be a member? And so all the names put forward, and then there was a vote to see who would be put in. So I don't remember if nine was the application and it was five expanded or the opposite. And then there was also an expansion of the city, two council members, and the mayor gets to choose those. They weren't currently, previously not on the board.
Okay, so...
And I'm sorry, there's also more that weren't application-based, it's by the organization. So downtown Lee Summit's chamber, there's certain different community organizations that also have a spot on the board, and they get to decide who they're sending. UCM is on the board, they get to decide who they're sending. And then MCC Longview has a spot on the board, and they get to decide who they're sending.
And out of the, so what's the total number that it expanded to?
I don't have it up top of my head, I'm so sorry.
When I was reading, I feel like it's 20, does that sound right?
It's around that.
Okay. Do we know how many were new to that 20? How many were new to the EDC?
So some are returners, so I don't know if I know that 100%. So I can think of somebody who was a member 10 years ago who's come back to help out now. There's another one who was a member and kind of disengaged maybe six years ago, and is back and very prominent in the group. So I don't know if I know everyone's history on there, but a lot of the faces were not the same faces two, three years ago.
And then the Board of Directors, so going back up, how is the Board of Directors selected?
So those organizations get to select somebody. The mayor gets to select his council members or her council members, whoever it may be at that time. And the rest of them are on three-year terms. Unless you're an officer, the officer has a chair, and then you get to stay on as a past chair, I think it is. So I'm trying to quote that the best I can off of memory because I don't have the charter in front of me, sorry. But usually, they're three-year terms.
Okay, do we know who voted for the elected positions that were voted on August 7 of 2024?
The existing board members reviewed the nine applications, if I remember the timing correctly. They're also the ones who voted then on the new bylaws to expand everything.
I think that, thank you, Dr. Buck. I think those are all my questions. I am prepared to support this. I do think that in looking at being fiscally responsible based on the past relationship we've had, just making sure that we have some contingency plans or commitments from the EDC is what I would feel most comfortable with, since it is taxpayer dollars that we're using to fund this organization. So I do have a couple of asks as we, like, prepare to vote on this, so I don't know. President Foley, do you want me to keep going, or do you, I want to pause if there's other people?
I mean, you can, but I have some as well, so.
And I will share that I sent it midday today because Board Member Miller sent some questions yesterday afternoon, and I needed some outside help for question number two. So that, I sent all that to you at noon, you may have not seen that. I know you don't live on your email, but you received that email around noon, three questions, and I think three attachments as well.
Yes, I did get those, and I was able to review those. Thank you for the detailed responses. I'll just keep going, and then I'll be done. So I think that for me to support this tonight, I would like to see that LSR-7 have a bigger representation within the EDC. We're the largest employer in the city, and we have, obviously, influence over students, over constituents, over community, and so I feel like having a larger presence on there would make sense, and this ensures that, you know, that we really do have a stake in it, especially since we're the second-largest contributor to it. I believe the city has four, if three?
So three voting members. Mark Dunning does come to him as an ex-officio to answer questions, but it's the mayor and two council members that the mayor picks.
Okay. So I would like to see us have, including superintendent, the board president, and an additional member. I mean, that would be, I think, what I would want to see. The other thing that I would like to present would be, to get on board with for me, would be, based on the concerns that we've had and the things that haven't been, the ROI hasn't been necessarily shown all the way, and the commitments haven't been fully executed, I propose that we modify the contribution this initial term to 12.5 instead of the 25, and then providing that the EDC makes good on the promises that are within the MOU, that then their contract would be fully executed with that 25 beginning in 2026. So that's, that's one of the suggestions that I have. And then my other one, based on, I was looking at the MOU, so page three, section D1, on the reporting requirements. I feel pretty strongly that we should include not only the superintendent, but the full board should be a part of that portion, so in sentence, I think it's the second sentence of section D1.
And when we were involved with them before, they would give an annual presentation to the Board of Education.
And the, yes, the annual presentation, it was section D, item number two. So there shall be a review of performance on an annual basis by the superintendent. I was, my ask is to also add the Board of Education to that review process, and so that allows for the board to be fully aware of what's happening and what's, you know, instead of just the superintendent. So again, I'll just reiterate, my ask would be that we have three voting members, which includes the superintendent, president, and one other additional board member, that we move forward with funding them at 12.5 with the intent to fully fund if they move forward with all the contractual agreements in the MOU, which include, I actually have one question now that I'm thinking about this. In the MOU, how can we be assured that the hiring of the new president is done according to the MOU timeline? Because if we go back to that December of 2022, that was brought up at that time, and we're now in 2024, and we still are sitting with that interim president, so...
Yep, this afternoon, I received an invitation for the interviews to be February 3 and 4. So they're interviewing in a couple of weeks.
So they're moving forward.
Yep, they waited until they had the city funds, which they have received the first $200,000 from the city for this year, just a couple of weeks ago, and so they have, I think, 40 applicants. There's been five chosen to be interviewed, and they're set for February 3 and 4.
Okay, sorry, so my ask, three voting members, the 12.5 initially with the agreement that we do the full 25 in 2026, and that change of the wording to include the full board along with the superintendent reviewing in section D1, item two. And then, I know there were concerns raised from other, from the Board of 2022, and many of those same concerns were raised in August this year, or 2024, in December. And so I guess the expectation would also be that when they come back before us, which I believe in the MOU it states in October 1, that those concerns that were brought up both in 2022 and some of those same ones in 2024 would be also addressed to move forward with the contract. So that is what I have. I don't know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so Dr. Buck, in addressing one of the questions that Board Member Miller raised in regards to the verbiage about renewing the contract, can we not just bring this before the board, before the December 2025 deadline, to have consideration so that we don't have to modify the MOU, but we can just have that plan that before the contract expires, we will bring it up to reevaluate the progress to see if we want to renew the contract for 2026?
That's correct. I think what the language is here is saying is that if we don't, we have to notify them by November 1 if we don't plan to continue.
Okay, so we can set that we will bring this back up before November 1?
Correct. Probably in the month of October, since they have till October 1 to give us the annual review.
Thank you. Okay, I have a few comments. So in regards to the ROI of the EDC, in 2022, when it was running, there were two significant projects that combined brought in $187.2,000 annually when fully in place, even with the aggressive 20-year tax abatement. So some of these EDC projects that are coming in are bringing a significant amount of tax revenues to our district, so I do want to highlight that, the amount that this can bring in. That being said, I've been asking questions for a long time about deliverables and how do we hold accountable moving forward, considering the history with the EDC in the past, with communication and accountability. And so what I would like to ask is that when we receive a quarterly report, I would like a quarterly report from the EDC instead of an annual report, which, that can come from either EDC directly, or, Dr. Buck, that could come from you, since you are sitting in the EDC, but I would like to know the number of externships that are created, the number of internships, the number of jobs that are created, the market value asset opportunities, how many workplace tours, job shadows, or projects that are created from the EDC. And I can email you that list.
Thank you. You said that faster, I could write, thank you.
If you would like. I understand that there's not an executive director, a permanent or executive director in place at this time, so I had to ask to see if I could get some specific measurable numbers about the goals for internships, externships, things like that, but I know when they don't have their person in place yet, it's difficult to hold them accountable to that standard. So I would like to just hear from them how the progress is going, and then moving forward beyond that, once we start getting some initial reports. I think we should talk as a group about what kind of goals we can set for the EDC when we are reevaluating each year. That being said, do we have any other questions or concerns? Okay, we have a motion and second on the floor? Okay. With that, then, all those in favor, raise your hand, and, oh, sorry, your light isn't lit up, sorry. Go ahead.
I thought that Board Member Miller wanted to make a change. Did she want to make a motion to affect that change?
Yeah, she'll have to make a motion to amend the, make, offer an amendment, then we vote on that amendment, and then depend on how the answers, then we either vote on the motion or vote on the amended motion. So she needs to make a motion to amend the motion, and then we need a second, and then we can talk about it.
Okay. I recommend that we amend the... Okay, I recommend that we amend the um amend the motion and amend the MOU.
Yes.
Based on the recommendations presented.
And can I take a shot at defining those three amendment, uh motion, you know, what you're amending? One, to request that the, our presence on the board, voting board, will increase from just superintendent to superintendent, president of the board and another board member to be assigned. Two, that this initial year be twelve thousand five hundred instead of twenty-five thousand, which could be addressed in a future year to go back to twenty-five thousand. And then, three, to change page three, D, number two, to add uh not just a report to the superintendent, but also to the full Board of Education.
That is correct. Thank you, Dr. Buck, that was great summary.
Linda, you okay with that? Okay.
All right, we have an a motion to amend on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and second. Is there any discussion, questions? Vice President Eslic?
If Board Member Myers wants to go first, she can. We kind of push at the same time, so I'll default to her.
Board Member Myers?
Sure, I understand the ask for um additional reporting as far as how the new council is running. I also understand the ask for, at a minimum, asking for the board president to be included. The the fifty percent reduction in the rate, um, I mean, I I think that the twenty-five thousand that they're asking us isn't a crazy number, based on, that was the previous number and several years have now passed and the number still remains the same. I I don't think that they are trying to rip us off or rip our taxpayers off. I think, I think that they, I I think that they have set it at a at a reasonable amount, so.
Thank you. Vice President Eslic?
I agree with the rate comment. I I can certainly understand the concerns that that are brought forward. I I agree with adding the report to the full board. I can absolutely get behind that. Um, I struggle a little bit with decreasing the amount that we are paying while simultaneously asking for additional representation. If I consider proportionality of um the chamber paying the most out of the entire budget for LSEDC at two hundred thousand dollars, I I think three representatives for them is fair, it's three or four? Did you say four? Okay, three. All right, I was right. So, you know, we would be at twenty-five thousand dollars paying a quarter of what the chamber is paying, sorry, the city council, I think I said chamber twice. I did, I'm sorry. I meant the city council. I knew what I meant. So, uh, back to my point, um at twenty-five thousand, that that's a quarter of what the city is paying, um and we would essentially be asking for almost equal representation of what they have. Um, I just don't really think that's a fair ask. Um, I certainly think it's fair um to ask for a report that involves the board, um so that we can have that conversation. Uh, I don't think it's fair, uh unfair to ask for the the president to be part of that conversation and be engaged. I don't know if that necessarily needs to be like the expectation, but more maybe an ex officio member so that the board president can be part of the the dialogue and be engaged in the board process, but um, I don't know, those are just my initial thoughts. I I do think that uh the EDC brings value to the community as a whole and thus our families and our taxpayers. Um, I don't think the sum is unreasonable and I think we've done a better job of requesting some guardrails and some metrics that we want to see, um that really weren't part of the conversation. And I know that the EDC has done uh something similar with the city and I know they'd be perfectly willing to do that with us, the district, um to improve that communication and uh everybody get on the same page as far as expectations, so um I can definitely get on board with the last request. I'm not sure I can support support the first two, though. Thanks.
Thank you. Board Member Haley?
Yeah, personally, I actually agree with Board Member Miller on um the asks, except for the twelve-five. I'm a hundred percent on board with uh Board Member Myers. I I believe twenty-five thousand dollars is a reasonable ask for what they're asking for. I do want to say, uh and again, I'm going to echo uh Board Member Miller, that I believe we need to monitor this and with the ask that President Foley's made about quarterly reports, I think that's a good idea and I would support that. I just think we need to make sure that uh, as the largest com- uh employer in the community, you know, I think we deserve some more seats on the on the board myself, uh so I could go with the three and I could go with um the the report to the board and I can also go with the twenty-five thousand. Uh, that's, I'm not going to vote against it if the board decides to go with twelve-five. I'm just saying, I could, I could go either way on that.
Board Member Miller?
Thank you. I agree that it's, the twenty-five is not a large amount. I don't think we're, you know, I don't, I don't think that. I just, I think that making sure we're holding them accountable and not, you know, writing a blank check with no accountability because before, um I don't, again, like I think Vice President Eslic said, there may maybe wasn't as many guardrails to hold them accountable. Um, and so, putting those guardrails in place, I think, are going to help us hopefully hold them accountable. And I would agree with President Foley that we make sure that it's on our agenda to discuss prior to that December thirtieth deadline, so, well, thirty, I guess it's thirty days before, so it would have to be at the latest in our November meeting for us to make.
Almost, uh, they would have to give us an annual report by October first of September and then we have to decide by November first, so month of October, we'd have to make a decision.
Yeah, so I just wanted to just come back and say, I agree that it's not a large amount. I just want to make sure that, again, we're being fiscally responsible and asking them and holding them accountable, so I feel like, you know, when you say, hey, we're going to give you half of this and then if you show up, if you do what you're you're supposed to do, you know, then if you do what you say you're going to do in the MOU, then no problem, you know, it, we're, we'll give you the amount that you asked for, so that that was my my main reason, but I just wanted to say, I I agree, it's not a lot of money in the big scheme of things.
So, can I clarify your ask? Were you saying then to offer like an initial twelve-five and then like halfway through the year, if they meet our reporting requirements, then pay the rest? Is that what you're saying or?
I mean, originally, I was saying twelve-five for this first one. Coming back to twenty twenty, going into twenty twenty-six, they get the full amount if they've met the the things that we, that that are in the MOU that they've said that that they were going to do.
Okay, that's how I initially understood it and then you said something else and I was like, wait, maybe I misunderstood.
That is correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Board Member Johnson?
So, I was going to say too, um, the twelve point five isn't like a deal breaker, but I do want to, I did want to add the, support adding the other two conditions to this. Um, I just think the twelve-five was kind of like, we're going to put our money where our mouth is, so let's see some improvements. So, if I can, I'd like to make an amendment to the amendment. Okay. Do we have to vote on the other one before I can make the?
No, actually, the last motion is one we'll vote on, so if you're making a new motion, we'll vote on that and if it alters the previous motion by Board Member Miller, we'll vote on the altered part. If it doesn't, we'll vote on it as she read. She is thinking about offering a motion to amend your motion, which is an amendment of the original motion. Think about, remember the nesting dolls, Russian nesting dolls? We're on the second one on the inside. She's thinking about, maybe we're going to a third one and we'll have to vote on a third one before we come back to the second one.
So, without having all of the exact words, those two additional uh conditions besides and removing the twelve point five, given the the full twenty-five, but those other two conditions?
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
You're moving to amend the previous motion with the changing of twelve thousand five hundred dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Board Member Myers had her, yours? Nope.
Actually, I think it was.
All right, I was like, did we move on before you got to ask your question?
No, I think it was the one from before, sorry.
Okay, all right, so um I do have a couple of questions about these amendments and if if they are necessary for even to to move forward, uh do we need to modify the MOU? Because we were already receiving a port, a report to the board and if we hold the LSEDC accountable and we say we want a quarterly report, do we need to really modify the language of the MOU to make that happen or can we just direct our superintendent that the EDC is going to come to us and give us a quarterly report? Otherwise, we are going to ask you for a quarterly report. So, wasn't sure if we need to um modify that and then with changing the um reevaluating the renewal of the 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 contract, do we need to modify the MOU if we're already planning to bring it back to the board in October before the renewal deadline? To where there was that, the the portion about group, the superintendent and Board of Education? And then with board expansion, I I guess a question, uh whether or not we can force a organization to now expand, modify their charter and expand to allow for additional board members or is that something that we say we would like to have and then get their their feedback and response?
So, on the latter one, um you're right, that then they would have to vote to um alter their charter and then vote again to accept the MOU. Um, so, there's two steps. Now, they both could happen same time in February. But that if you, that's your, if that's what's needed to get there, then we'll offer it to the, and they get to consider that if they're okay with that. But on the first one, if we don't change that first one, if it's uh, the quarterly report's not written in the MOU, we can ask them and and tell them, hey, we're not going to renew you if you don't do this, but it won't be in the MOU, it'll just be a ask and say, hey, we're not going to renew if you don't do it. I would say quarterly report, I would start in the third quarter because you're, they got to hire staff. They're going to hire the their leader first in the month of February, then they got to start hiring, the workforce development person will have to be hired, so I would not, um, I would give them some grace and say the third quarter.
So, with with that, do we need these modifications that have been requested for board expansion and um inserting the Board of Education terminology in the MOU to accomplish what we what we are asking? Do we, do we need to, in your opinion, do we need to modify the MOU?
It could be either way, uh, it's up to the will of the board on that one, but yes, you're correct, we don't have to. We can just make those verbal ask and see how that goes.
Thank you. So, now we have, we have a motion to amend the amendment and that is what is up up for vote right now and that has been motion and second?
To change twelve-five to twenty-five thousand.
Okay. Do we have any other questions or comments before we vote? Board Member Miller?
Okay, I just want to be clear, so the only amendment to my amendment was increasing the number to twenty-five. Is that how I understand what we're voting on? Okay, thank you so much.
With that, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, now we are looking at the amendment that had the amendment to it. So, that would be the uh, the board expansion and the assertion of the BOE into the MOU terminology around the superintendent. Board Member Myers?
I think that uh in light of the fact that they are trying to get themselves back off the ground again and when they presented to us um last month, it was just last month, right? It seems like a hundred years ago right now, uh, last month, they, I, there was a comment made that it sounded like they would be amenable to adding another person from the board. I don't think we have to completely throw this document out to accomplish that. I think that's probably a conversation and it might be something that, depending on how that conversation is handled, that might be added along the way type of a thing, if we can be okay with that as they are working through their first year. The second part about that would also be with regards to the reporting. I I think that given uh the fact that they will give an annual report and given the fact that they have a lot of logistics that that are still trying to be worked through, I would trust at this point that Dr. Buck's um presentation to us as far as just keeping us up on where they're at in the process and what's happening in the meetings would satisfy that requirement, at least for this first year.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments? You look like you're about to say something.
So, now we're voting on?
The amendment.
Now, what's a vote on, are you wanting to uh change the original motion to request three voting members? I'm going to skip the twenty-five thousand because it's what's in the original and then change the report to be to the whole board and me, not just me.
Okay. Okay, so we're, we're voting on the amendment? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye? Wait, sorry.
You're voting to see if you want to change the original motion to make it where we're proving the MOU with these two changes. Three voting members, which will be superintendent, board president, and a third board member and changing page three, D two, to include the full board getting the report instead of just the superintendent. That's what we're voting on. You're voting whether you're going to change the original motion with those two pieces and then we'll have to vote on the original motion.
Okay, before we vote, I guess I'm I'm going to make a comment when it, in regard to the board expansion. I do have hesitation about asking them to change their charter and expand their board to include two additional voting members at at this time because we haven't had that conversation with them. So, I don't know, Dr. Buck, if you've had conversations with the EDC, if if something like this has been brought up since, now it sounds like they're amenable to some expansion. That's, the one thing that gives me pause is putting it in the MOU so it's a requirement that they expand instead of giving the opportunity to have a two-way conversation and maybe even doing it in phases after they get their executive director in place to maybe add one and then another and kind of giving a little bit of flexibility there.
The only conversation we've had was with the chair when he came here and Board Member Myers is correct, that he um indicated he'd be open to an expansion to include a board member on there. We haven't talked numbers though or anything like that with the whole board, with the LSEDC board, I'm sorry, I never realized I'm talking to another board.
Board Member Miller?
I understand that we would be asking them to to make a change, but I also understand that they want our commitment and they want our money and I feel like it's not an unreasonable ask for us to increase our presence on their board since we would be at the twenty-five thousand. We will continue to be the second largest contributor to their organization and obviously the largest employer with the most constituents, you know? So, um, I I I would stand by that. I think that if we, I I'd be, I think I'd be okay with definitely having two if we don't have three, but I think two is is more than reasonable, um, which would include superintendent and board president unless the board thought that was, we needed to vote on someone else to be it, but.
I guess for for clarity, I would ask, are we needing to modify the MOU today if to to adjust the verbiage if if this is what the amendment proposed, if this passes? Or is this something because we now are proposing changes to the MOU that we're going to have to bring this back at a different time?
If you vote on an amended MOU and the LSEDC accepts it with a vote, it would not come back until October of twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Vice President Eslic?
I just had a, a curious curiosity and I don't know if you can answer this, Dr. Buck, but when the EDC appoints board members, do they do it as? but when the EDC appoints board members, do they do it as certain ones roll off? Or is there like a certain time of year where they accept? Because I know typically there's a cycle when boards... Would that align with elections and how we would assign new people?
So for the non-appointed ones by organizations, there is a cycle and it's fiscal year that follows our fiscal year, July to June. That being said, at any time, the Downtown Association or MCC Longview or UCM or even the City Council could have different people assigned. So it's up to those organizations. Are you going to keep same person for five years? Going to rotate it every six months? That is not addressed by the charter or by the bylaws. It's up to the organization to decide who they're assigning.
Okay, thanks.
Board Member Miller? Okay. Does anybody else have any questions or concerns on this amendment? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye? Aye?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. So now we are going back to the original item as amended. So approving the amended memo of under... Approving the amended memo of understanding and school grant for the LSEEDC. Does anyone have any questions or concerns this time? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All right, motion passes. Next up is item 8.02. Amending the resolution placing conditions on issuance and use of certain bonds. Go ahead, Dr. Buck.
So I tried to do my best to capture what we talked about December 19th. I did add one extra thing that we didn't think about December 19th. If, which is probably the likelihood, right? That the group that's LSEWVE Process Action Team, which is the applications are going to be going out tomorrow. If that group says, no, we don't want to merge, which I assume based on the makeup, that's probably what the answer is going to be, we wouldn't have enough funds to do both buildings separately with existing bond unless the projects come under or interest rates go high and our investments come in higher while we're waiting to pay the bills. So there is a chance. And we didn't... Pleasantly Elementary was not considered as an individual building against these two as individual buildings. So I added an extra step saying if the action is not by that committee and the board takes that action to not merge them, which I think is highly likely, the CAC then would consider those three buildings and rank them one, two, and three with one definitely being done, two being done if there's funds available, three being done if even more funds are available. Does that make sense? And Joe Hatley helped me out with this. So I made a draft and then Joe legalized it. So thank you, Joe. And I tried to put those two teams in Pratt language because that's what we're used to, to be consistent with our other study groups we have.
I apologize. Do we need to do a motion before we do a discussion? All right, can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion so that we can have the conversation, but I do have questions. I move to approve the amended resolution as presented.
Second. All right, motion and second? Questions, comments? I guess I'll go ahead and start. I do have a question. So with LSE and the Westview Pratt, once they come to a decision, it's indicated that this is going to then go to the CAC afterwards?
It would come to the board to accept the recommendation. And if the recommendation is to not merge, which I'm assuming that's what the recommendation is going to be, then CAC would look at the three buildings individually and rank one, two, and three. No one would afford the first one and which second one, so it's queued up for if funds are available. So if you think of the 2020 bond, Miller Park wasn't originally there, but funds became available. So the board voted to do Miller Park. The geometry construction buildings weren't there. But as funds became available, the board voted to build the geometry and construction slash robotic buildings. So it'd be similar to that. We need to have the order queued up. So that way, the board would know what action was recommended to take next.
Okay. So would it be possible with this plan to consider after the Pratt makes the recommendation to send that recommendation to the CAC to also evaluate with considering all the new information that they have explored and that has come out over these past several months until whenever this Pratt concludes?
That certainly can happen, yes.
Thank you.
And you and I are in a steering committee and we have a meeting next month. So we can tell them that.
Okay. Vice President Aslik?
Okay, so I had a couple of questions. So I'm probably going to ask some things that honestly came from people who have emailed us. And I've tried to read emails and some constituents brought up some valid questions that I just thought honestly, after our deadline, when we're supposed to have our questions on Monday, these questions kind of came up throughout the week. So I apologize, they weren't asked before, but I think they're valid. So I'm just going to ask. So one that was consistently brought up a couple of times was mentioning Pleasantly Elementary as the next likely project. Does it need to be in there? Does that handcuff us at all? I mean, is it necessary to list the next project that's queued up in this particular agreement? Or is that just kind of like an informational piece?
So I put that in here because we can't afford to do two separately. And I think that sounded like in the language in the amendment, not the amendment, the original resolution was we could do them separately. There's not enough funds. And also the CAC's recommendation for the next project, if there was funds available, is listed as Pleasantly Elementary. So they need to reconsider like, okay, you only can do one of these. It's Pleasantly Elementary, now one, two, or three? Because they didn't consider it that way. But I'm open to anything. So I'm just trying to follow what CAC's recommendation is. And there's something queued up as well as recognize that there's not enough funds to do two buildings right now unless we come under budget or investments come in higher. Or there's actually a third piece. When we sell bonds, there's higher premium than we're expecting to get on them.
I guess I think because there's so much unknown right now about what's going to be the outcome of this conversation. I know we have assumptions, but we don't really know the outcome. So is it appropriate to concern another school with what could possibly happen when it's one outcome of many that could result? I think for me, maybe just striking that last part of, you know, line 32 that starts with "with" and just the rest of that sentence that concerns PLE. Just because we don't know. And that would be something that the CAC would ultimately decide. And they might go a completely different direction. So I guess I would just be concerned with putting PLE on notice, potentially unnecessarily. That's just my thought, but I'm just putting that to the rest of the board.
And certainly you can do that if you're asking if that's possible. PLE has been the next one off, both the 2020 and the 2025 bond. So I think some of them may want to be considered, but...
What was the amount for that renovation?
I'm so sorry, I don't have it in front of me. Dr. Shelton will look it up real quick.
Okay, well, while he's looking that up. There's just one... There's a comment more that I just kind of want to address that came out through emails that was concerned about the way a paragraph reads that some community members felt read as if there was a foregone conclusion that LSE would consolidate with Westview. And it's line 62 in the resolution. And personally, I don't read it that way. And that's the only reason why I wanted to meet, just mention that. The way I read that, to me, says that it's putting a restriction that no construction work will occur that has anything to do with consolidation until all of these steps and these concerns have been addressed that the rest of the resolution discusses. So I just wanted to call attention to that because I just, I don't read it that way. I don't think that's how... I don't think that's the spirit of what's written. Perhaps the rest of the board has a different perspective of that. But that's... I'm not prepared to change that. I know multiple people had expressed that concern via email, but I'm not prepared to address that because I don't, I just don't think that it reads that same way. So that's just...
And if you have... I think that's one that Mr. Hatley, if you look at your redlined version, I think he changed that. So if you want to know why he changed it the way he does, but I agree with you, that's no... I'm assuming it's going to be the opposite way, so...
Well, he's coming up. The amount that you were requesting is 23 million.
23, okay, thank you.
And I just realized it looks like there are a couple of words missing from line 63 in the revision and redlining process. Because I think the intent is that line 63 should read W... I'll just read the whole sentence so it makes sense. Be it further resolved that no construction work to affect consolidation of LSE and WVE will commence unless... Because I think that's the language that was in the resolution from last month. That was just a... We double and triple check this and still miss this when we're doing the redlining and stuff gets deleted out. So that language should definitely be in there because I think it does accurately reflect the intent of the board.
Thank you. Did you have a comment about the resolution? Because I have some comments on the Pratt, but I can stop if you're talking about the resolution. Okay, well, by... I mean...
On the resolution, you're... The comment that you raised about including PLE in this document, and I don't remember which line number you referenced at this point. Yeah. So I did not... I did not read that as, hey, we're putting PLE on notice. I read it as it's an acknowledgement that if the consolidation doesn't move forward, doesn't mean that something's going to majorly change at Westview or Lee Sommet Elementary. I read it as the... Here's the pot of money. And so I didn't interpret it the same way, I guess. I just thought it was an acknowledgement that if the consolidation isn't going to happen, other options are definitely going to be on the table and that would be it, I guess, so...
I'm not sold on modifying the language. I mean, I'll do what the will of the board is with regard to this. So if nobody feels that strongly about it, that's fine. Did anybody else have anything on the resolution? Okay.
Board Member Haley?
Thank you. I need to be, have my memory refreshed because this resolution says that we're going to be $10.8 million short if we don't combine Lee Sommet Elementary and Westview Elementary. The best of my recollection, when I was on the CAC, I thought that there was only $18 million in the ask for Lee Sommet Elementary and 24 million for Westview. Am I mistaken on that? Can somebody clarify that for me?
Yeah, the combination of those two individually is 10.8 million more than just doing Westview expansion and then consolidating. So the two individually were bigger than one building expansion.
Okay, that just... I just didn't remember it that way. I thought the original ask for Westview was 24 million and it was 18 for Lee Sommet Elementary. So my mistake, thank you.
You're correct. That's... So that'd be 42 million. But if you just renovated and expanded Westview and that's all you did and both buildings went to there, it would not be 42 million, it'd be less than that.
Well, the original CAC had 18 million for Lee Sommet Elementary before we ever talked about consolidation. And there was only 24 million for... So I guess I'm not understanding where this 10.8 million is coming from.
So to fit the budget when they proposed 225, they recommended not those two projects separately. They recommended a project at Westview that was expanding and both buildings go into there. And that money was less than those two individual projects. So if we go back to those, just doing those two individual projects, we exceed our 225.
Oh, it's the bonding capacity. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
The amount we're asking. We put on, we passed a $225 million resolution to put on the ballot. It would exceed that, we couldn't afford it.
Okay, so this is really not about Lee Sommet Elementary and Westview. It's about the bonding capacity. That's the limitation.
It's about how much we ask for in the bond.
Right, that's what we're limiting, is that. So we're not asking for enough, is what we're saying, to do that, those two projects separately.
If everything comes in as budgeted correctly now. The caveat is, like with the 2020, we... Things came under budget and we had two things happen. Our premium bonds sold for more than we thought because it was, people wanted to invest in schools because it were safe at the time. And compared to other things they could invest their money into, as well as we can only have our funds for... 85% of our funds for three years. We have to pay it out by then. Well, the interest rates were 5%. We've never seen that in a long time. I guess it should never... It's been a long time since we've seen that. And so we earned more money and our projects came in less, allowed us to do two additional projects, which the board voted on doing those two projects.
Right, and I understand that. I'm just... It's the limit that we put on the ask on the bond that is not giving us enough money.
To do each individually if it comes in as budgeted right now.
Right, so do we need to change the ask on the bond?
It has not been noticed to do that. I don't know if we could do... Yep, my two lawyers over there, friends, are saying we cannot do that tonight. And we'd have to do that before January 28th, which I think we'd actually have to do it in '27 to deliver, I think the dates are. So we would have to have a special board meeting and notice that up.
Okay, so I'm... I guess I'm just asking is do... Does the board feel like that that $10.8 million is important enough that we need to do that? Because if the community, if the Pratt and the board ends up deciding not to combine those two campuses, we're not going to have enough money to not combine them, correct?
Ben, looks like he wants to say something here.
Yeah, so on the 225, whether you can up it... So you have approved a resolution to call the election for 225 million. You can rescind that resolution and then go back and approve another resolution, increasing the amount. But I would have to go back... I don't have the numbers in front of me whether you are up against your constitutional debt limit. You know, you are allowed under the Constitution to borrow 15% of your assessed valuation. And that includes your outstanding bonds. So that's something that could be done. But here's the kicker is that all of the election information has to be to the election authorities by January 28th.
Sure.
So you got a deadline.
So having said that, if we don't fund the bond with enough money to take care of both of these schools separately, we don't have a course of action forward identified for that.
That's why I'm saying that maybe if, when it comes to that, CAC makes recommendations to board to say, which one's first? If funds can available, which one's second? Which one's third? That's exactly right.
Okay, so I mean, as long as the board is okay with that, I can go along with that.
Yeah, Board Member Haley, this is... The numbers that were provided were the fully renovated projects. So that's a fully renovated LSE in place and a fully renovated Westview in place. So if the recommendation is given and the decision is that we are not going to consolidate and merge the two schools together, then we would just have to look at the funds that we have available and they would not be both fully funded to the original amounts. But that would be modified. But that doesn't mean that we cannot keep the two individual buildings separate. They just both won't be fully renovated to the initial CFMP plans that were presented to the CAC.
Okay, understood. I just wanted that clarified. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions, comments? Vice President Aslik?
Okay, I have a Pratt question. And it's about the district-wide elementary enrollment Pratt. And it's probably for Dr. Shelton because it has to do with the CFMP. I'm going to put you on the spot, I'm sorry. Okay, so with this Pratt, the membership is the district CFMP committee. So can you tell me, how does that... Is that a standing committee? Or will this be a new membership of committee members who have the opportunity to apply to be part of this particular committee for the purpose of the Pratt? Does that make sense? Like, is there a group of people that's the CFMP right now? And those are the people who will be part of this Pratt because they're already on the committee?
We'll start with the core group of CFMP members who gathered in '23, '24. We will likely, depending on their willingness to participate and the number we have that would participate, would put a call out like we did, like we did in '23, '24, to see if other community members, staff members would be...
staff members would be interested in serving on the CFMP. So, but we, we will start with the core group that we, we had in twenty-three, twenty-four and build from that as needed.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have right now.
Board Member Myers?
Yeah, so my questions or comments would be more so to the LSE, Westview Pratt. On lines, when you get into, I guess, starting on line sixteen, those may include, but they are not limited to, keeping the building boundaries as is, consolidating to one elementary building, re-boundary via a new boundary team, closure and re-boundary to multiple sites. I'm not sure that I'm okay with the re-boundary via a new boundary team. I don't know that, this Pratt is going to have the power to come back and say, hey, we want to re-boundary for like the five schools that are around it. I don't know that I'm okay with that. As, as, I don't know that that's where that option goes.
I hear your concern. And we, I, I actually, I don't disagree. I'm just wondering if we could change the wording, and I think that's maybe why President Foley was asking about where that recommendation could go, to put that checks and balances in place to alleviate the concern that a small group of people would be able to then impact a much larger group of people that doesn't have a voice in this process. So I hear that concern acknowledged. I agree. I kind of read this like, and maybe this is just because I want to read it this way and we just need to change the wording to make it more clear, as more of a recommendation that this is what they would recommend, that to look at a larger boundary impact, boundary change impact, and then that would, to me, that need to go to another body to review. Does that make sense? And then if that, if the CAC agrees or the board approves and we think that that needs to go further to evaluate boundaries, then to me, I feel like that, that kind of bleeds into what this other Pratt is doing, which is what the district-wide enrollment Pratt is also evaluating, so.
But that's a district-wide committee. This committee has got a very specific interest, a very specific mission that they want to see accomplished here, and I don't think that re-boundary line for the greater good is, it goes there.
So, sorry, go ahead.
That's, that was the, the reason why I asked the question about the, the CAC is for that reason. So should that be the recommendation that comes from the Pratt? We give other members across our district opportunity to, to provide feedback into that and really evaluate that because that would not be appropriate for a small group in a concentrated area to make a decision that infects our entire district.
The actual, last time we re-boundary, the actual recommendation was a totally different Pratt. It wasn't CAC that studied this and got, and did engagements with community members at multiple sites over, gosh, eight months or so. So I would, the recommendation would be to the Board of Education, but I would hope the Board of Education, if that recommendation was to look at re-boundary, that we include either the process with the CFMP we're talking about or create a separate Pratt that's district-wide, because you're right, if it's re-boundary, or if it's re-boundary more than including those two buildings, other people probably want to have a say in that as well. So I would agree, but that we don't want to just act on a recommendation, change a boundary and pull kids from, you know, Cedar Creek to, to Westview or Meadow Lane to Lee Sommet Elementary. But it would be, we recommend to look at re-boundary and then the board either convenes a separate Pratt or tasks the District CFMP to make a, or to look at it and study it and make a recommendation. And with those two groups, whichever way you go, I would hope there would be engagements like we did for when we did middle school boundary changes.
Right, but if I'm on that committee, I'm just playing the devil's advocate for just a minute, and I really want to kick this thing down the curb for five or six years, I'm just going to say, I want to re-boundary. And boy, that's going to take up some time, and that kind of sabotages the process of what we're trying to do here with regards to allowing for the people that are actually directly impacted in this to feel like there has been more voice and more opportunity for perspective to be heard and listened to and, and just time, right? And, 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 well, I, I can solve my time problem. Let's just demand a rebound, because I've lived through those as an, as an employee. Those are not fast. I mean, if you really want to throw the, throw the sand in the gear, there you go. So I, does that line have to stay in there?
I mean, it doesn't have to be in there because there's a line right before it that says, those options may include but are not limited to. So even what's in there, they could come up with something completely different that's not even listed. I don't know what that would be, but, I mean, to me, you could strike it out there, but it still doesn't eliminate the potential that that becomes a conversation. It's just not listed.
And I, I don't disagree with you.
So, I mean, if you would feel more comfortable striking that, I don't have an issue with that because it's, it still doesn't prohibit the conversation from happening, but it doesn't, I guess, spell that out as you need to evaluate this. Does that make sense? Does that help, or is that still more of a concern? I don't know if that helps or hurts.
The first two sub-bullets are definitely needed. After that, those next two, if you want to strike, I don't think it changes anything. Because you're still, the recommendation is still coming to you and you can decide then what to do with it and what's the next steps. You want to either charge me or a committee to do.
Yeah, I, I personally would like to see, do I, I guess I have to make a motion to strike line twenty and twenty-one?
A motion to amend?
A motion to amend the Process Action Team document.
Actually, it's actually not up for vote. You just tell me. If you tell me, I'll change it.
I just want to, if we could amend, please, twenty, line twenty and twenty-one.
If the will of the board is to delete twenty and twenty-one, I will do so.
Do you want to just get a pulse for everybody?
I knew Mr. Hatley would not like this.
Yeah, I, I think you actually would require, because the resolution has these two Prats as exhibits. So the motion is to approve them as presented, so I think we would need actually a motion to amend, to strike those two lines, and if that motion's adopted, then when the board ultimately votes on the resolution, that would be out of it. We would take that out.
So Joe, is amendment, is a motion is to amend the, the exhibit, LSE, W, you know, the title of this Pratt by striking line twenty and twenty-one?
Twenty and twenty-one, yeah. That would be the motion. And I would also remind, I'd, I'd like to request ultimately a motion to amend the resolution to add those two words in line sixty-three will commence at some point. But that's the motion right now, I think.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought I kind of halfway had. I would like to make a motion to amend the LSE-WVE document by striking lines twenty and twenty-one.
Second.
Did you also want to add in about line sixty-three?
Oh, sure. And we would also like to amend line sixty-three, is that what you said? To adding the words "will commence." After. Will commence after WVE. Oh, WVE will commence unless and until so on and so forth. Dot, dot, dot. Sorry, I had the wrong document open.
We have a motion and a second for the amendment to strike lines twenty and twenty-one and to modify line sixty-three to add in the two words. Do we have any questions or comments on that amendment? Board Member Miller, your, your light's already lit up from, from prior, so go ahead.
Okay, I just was wanting to chime in and just say that I agree with Board Member Myers, and I think that, yeah, I would agree with that. That I, I don't think that the, the boundary changes need to be included in that particular group's decision, so.
Board Member Johnson?
I didn't know, do we need to vote on that before I talk or no?
You can. Would you like to wait till after this amendment?
We could because what I have to say is it doesn't impact the amendment.
Sure. All right, any questions or comments on the amendment? Okay. All those in favor? Oh, sorry.
I put it back on.
Got you.
Okay.
Okay, in regards to the amendment, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. All right, motion passes. Now, Board Member Jones.
So as I think about this Pratt and I'm trying to come from, I'm coming from a wholesome place of thinking. I feel like we've heard the views of the, I'm going to say the twenty parents from LSE. I don't know, aside from putting LSE and Westview in a room together and having them kind of go back and forth about this, what this new Pratt plans to achieve. I mean, I guess, we know how the, we know how LSE feels about this. They don't want the combination. So when we're, and when we're doing this, would, is this time well spent? We already know how the community feels about this in terms of LSE. And I think a part of some of the conversations we were having is, you know, if there are people at Westview who would like to see it, are we going to put them in a room and now pit them against each other in a way? Because we know how LSE feels. We know, you know, it's just what I'm wondering. We create this and start this and they've voiced their opinions to us. What do we plan to learn new, I guess, from this Pratt? What do we plan to learn new from the team?
So maybe I would put it back on giving the community an opportunity to learn about the decision-making process of the district. Because I look at some of the things that are going to be discussed, which is, you know, some of the enrollment data that maybe they've seen, maybe they haven't, understanding what the district is evaluating, understanding the impact of what smaller class sizes incrementally can do for their students. So I don't know so much as, is this a benefit to us? Or I would put that back on, this is a benefit and an opportunity for our community more so than anything else. That's how I look at it, is it's giving them the empowerment and the opportunity to have the dialogue, the face time with the district leadership and independent facilitator to give them the opportunity for rebuilding trust. So to me, that's, that's where, I'm not the one who's going to do the Pratt. I'm not going to be there. So is it valuable time well spent? Ask them. Ask those people out there because a portion of them are probably going to be the ones applying for this, this Pratt. And I hope they would find it valuable. I hope so. I don't know what the outcome will be. It could be exactly what you might anticipate it to be, which is, we want our separate buildings. And that's possible, but at least we did the due diligence of allowing our community the opportunity to be heard and to be engaged in the process and maybe have an education about, about the process as well. So that's, that's how I would respond to that.
Okay, and I definitely.
If I can add to that, December nineteenth, we voted to create this committee. It was called a committee then. I'm just putting in terms that we're used to using for Pratt. And so it has the same format, but we've kind of already told everybody we're doing this with our previous vote, so. I, I think it's worked. It's coming forward from our December nineteenth.
Right. I guess I was thinking, go to committee didn't mean it was necessarily going to a brand-new committee. Again, it could have been turfed back to CAC, which is a committee, so. Again, and I don't, I'm not saying there's an issue with this. I just feel like we've heard very strongly how people feel. And maybe it will be the same. Maybe something will change with some additional dialogue. And so, no, it doesn't, I don't want to say it's not worthy of the time. I just was thinking, we, we have heard them, you know, we, we have heard them. But if it's, if it's worthwhile for the community and their decision could be, whatever decision is, is better well-supported, then I'm totally on board with that too. It just, something I was thinking about.
I, I completely get what you're asking. It's a fair question. I think we're also including some community members and staff, which I feel like we've definitely heard from a lot of parents. Not so much, I think, not as strong of a presence from just the, the community who just maybe lives down there or has an attachment. So just giving that opportunity to bring them into the process, letting them be heard and involved. So I think that that's, I think that's worth us, you know, if it costs us paying for a facilitator, I feel like that, to me, I'm okay with that, and I hope the rest of the board can join in and just see what comes out of it.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss that.
Board Member Haley?
Yeah, I'd like to address Board Member Johnson's concerns and, and I believe based on the, the discussions I've had in the community and with other board members and some staff, I think what this offers our community is a transparent process, which I believe the community feels there wasn't any transparency in the last decision-making process. And so I think this gives us some transparency and it gives us an opportunity to re-establish some trust with our community by engaging them in the process. And I sincerely hope we don't end up with twenty people on this side and twenty people on this side voting for that way. I hope we can have an objective process with a good facilitator and, and objective parents that will consider what's best for our community as a whole, as well as what's best for their individual campus. So I, I believe it's, it's a good process to at least get started on rebuilding some trust in our community.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, comments? All right, so now we are back to the original motion on approving the amended resolution, which contains the Prats as presented or modified, amended today. Including the insertion of, or the, the deletion of the lines and insertion of the words in line sixty-three, yes. Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye, motion passes. Next up, we have item eight point zero three, full Prop C waiver ballot language.
Just real quick, before, this is queued up from last month. In twenty-twenty-two, the board was exploring ways to give a significant salary increase. They wanted to explore both Prop C and a, and a debt to operating levy transfer. They tasked the CAC to make a recommendation. CAC got input not only from their committee, but also from Business Roundtable and several teacher groups. At the end of it, they decided to go with the debt to operating levy transfer and then asked that Prop C be reconsidered in twenty-twenty-five in conjunction with a bond. So that's why they talked about it in twenty-twenty-four and made the recommendation to you. The timing of it, if you recall, was, I think, one vote different between doing it this April and doing it, I can't remember if it was August of twenty-five or April twenty-sixth. Board President, do you remember which one of those?
August.
August of twenty-five. So the timing was, they didn't have much consensus on. What they did have consensus on, they wanted to do this and they wanted it to be for salaries. So it would be about a four million dollar salary increase. The impact of timing, if you did it in August, that's after we approve salary schedules and offer contracts, so it would not go into effect for staff until the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. If you did it in April and it passed, it would, it would affect the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as far as salaries. I just wanted to lay that out, and so it's up to you guys if you want to put it on the ballot in April or not.
Can I get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution calling a proposition C rollback reelection in reorganized School District Number Seven of Jackson County.
Second.
There's a motion and second? Any questions, comments? Okay. Oh, Vice President Eslick?
All right, I'll make a, I'll make a couple of comments. So generally, I'll just say that I don't support putting Prop C on the ballot. And I just, I kind of want to address an objection first because I understand that there are some on the side of being pro Prop C, full waiver, who say that this should be something that the voters get to decide.
And theoretically, I don't disagree with that. And I would, I would feel comfortable putting it on the ballot if I felt that this was something that we desperately needed in our budget in order to support our, our revenue and be able to pay teachers. But the reality is, we have the money to provide raises that are in concert with what we have provided our staff over the last 12 years. Just on average, and I know we have kind of a, a big year in there with the $12 million increase that we did, so I kinda pull that out, and that's, that's to me an outlier. But over the last 12 years, we've provided an average of 3.64% increase per year to our staff. With the $6 million increase for salaries this year, that's an average increase of 3.75%. So, we're not providing a out of, out of the norm increase, below the norm increase. So, we are able to keep pace with providing a step to the staff, without having to go back to the taxpayer and ask for more money. Because the reality is that Prop C, it's a tax increase. And it's not money that the district is, is owed in a sense. Because I know it, it, on some level, this Prop C issue is portrayed as money that the district is losing, or something that's being taken away from them, if we don't approve it. But the voters approved Prop C as a way to alleviate their property tax burden, in the, by using sales tax revenue. So, that's something the voters did approve, and I know that intent has probably been lost over the decades since the 80s, when it was put into place. But that was the original intent. So, it's not that, it's an, it's an entitlement that, that the district is losing, because they're just, they're, we're owed the money. This was a decision that taxpayers made. Many districts have rolled it back, and that's true. But that, to me, is not a sufficient argument for us to do it. We enjoy a very robust budget, we have very strong assessed valuation, very strong local property tax revenue, that very well supports our budget at the moment. I don't feel like we have such a lapse in inability to pay our staff, that I would be prepared to go ask the voters for more money. So, for me, that's, it's, I understand you can put it to the voters and let them decide. As elected officials, I feel that we were put here, we were, we were voted here in these positions to make these decisions, because our dr, our judgment was trusted by our community members and our constituents. So, I'm not prepared to say, we can't afford to pay our staff, which essentially, if I'm going back to a voter and saying, I need more money, I'm telling them, we can't do this unless you give us more money. And I can't stand behind that confidently and say that. And so, because that's how I view this, I just don't feel like I can support putting Prop C on the ballot to ask our voters for additional funding, so, thank you.
Board Member Myers?
Yeah, so, just as a sidebar, Team Lee Summit grappled with this issue probably, I don't know how long today, with regards to how to address salary areas that are still ranking below what the rest of the Big Six neighboring school districts have in those various different types of employment situations. And, so, and we didn't come up with a, we didn't come up with a resolution, we, we had to put a pin in it, and that's why we came screaming in at 5 o'clock. So, anyway, since joining this board, the conversation about our teachers and support staff compensation has been an on and off again topic. Each time it comes up, each time it comes up, comments have been made by my fellow board members that we need to take care of our people. If they need something, we need to make sure they have it. To my line of thinking, that includes salary and benefits that are competitive, comparable to our competitors, and allow a person to have a livable situation. That's what Prop C is at this point. Comment has also been made about tightening our belts. I am here to assure you that that process has already been happening, dating back to May of 2023. My position was eliminated when I retired. I taught six sections of social studies, at least some in West. All six of those teaching sections disappeared from the schedule within 24 hours of my letter. Reallocated, boom, gone, done. And I can speak to that personally, cause it happened to me. We have A-plus hours cut from student service positions. We've cut hours from administrative assistants, we've cut hours from technology specialists. And these are only the ones that have come and talked to me. Okay, so that has been happening. I promise you there's more, I just don't know who they are. But there appears to be some type of an internal audit, or a reshuffling of our supplies, or whatever, there's some term that's being used for it, that I, I can't remember what it is right now. It's, it's happening. So, please realize that there really are people that are, that, that, it, it might look on paper like we're, we're bad on cash, but we, we aren't. My final point, is I remember a few years back when CAC did recommend about a Prop C ballot item, and the board completely ignored it. And you talk about a trust situation between the public and the board. The, the damage control took quite a while to recover from, and I just would like to try to avoid that. We've, we've gone to great lengths to try to avoid that with the elementary situation. I fully understand that we, every single one of us has different perspectives on this topic. As Board Member Myers, I wanna see it pass. I wanna see what's best for our kids happen, which means I wanna see people that feel like they're happy, feel like they're valued when they come to work, feel like there's, there's enough things, people in place to support them, et cetera. As taxpayer Myers, of course, whatever we can do to lighten the load, just gives me more to go, you know, travel or do whatever. I get that, I, we, we all have those, we all have those struggles. But as a board, we have a responsibility to consider what's best for our kids in our district. And as such, I believe that we have an obligation to accept the CAC's recommendation, and put the Prop C on a ballot, and let the public ultimately weigh in. I, I think we have an obligation to do that, and I think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you, Board Member Johnson?
So, some of my comments are gonna echo Board Member Myers, because we are both on Team Lee Summit. And one of our goals, we decided is, you know, as a organization, that we wanted to get some of our administrators who are currently not being paid as well, in the, you know, in the top three. One of the ways of doing that would be through Prop C. We have multiple positions where we rank in the bottom for salaries, compared to other school, surrounding school districts. And if our goal is to get them out of the bottom, to remain competitive, we do, we have to find a way to pay for that. And so that's one of the reasons I support it. Again, as Meyer said, I wanna do more vacations and things like that, I don't wanna pay as many tax dollars. When I look at the actual dollar amount, again, selfishly for me, I think it's worth it considering the staff members who are not compensated well, and how else are we gonna reach our strategic plan of getting those staff members out of the red. So, I, I do support the Prop C being on, being on the ballot. For that reason though, and everyone knows, I, I came into this position strongly on teacher and staff pay, certified and non-certified pay, and I, I still remain there. And that's why I would like to see it, because I know we have staff members who are not being compensated well, right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Haley?
Thank you. Yeah, in, in my career, over spanning 40 years, there's always been a competition for resources. There's never not competition for resources, and there's never enough resources to go around. To my knowledge, we're paying competitive wages, and I think we should be, absolutely, I, I agree with that, 100%. Since this issue came up a few months ago, I have taken an anecdotal informal poll, and I have had yet one citizen that can explain Prop C to me. If we put it on the ballot, they don't even know what it means, at least none of the people I've talked to can explain it to me. It's a tax increase if we put it on the ballot and it's passed. If you put it out there as a tax increase, I don't believe it would pass. And it's very confusing language, it's what the people down in Jefferson City gave us to work with. So, personally, I do not support putting it on the ballot, because I don't believe that the people understand necessarily exactly what it's doing. And I could be wrong about that, and I'm perfectly willing to be proved wrong, but at this point, I'm not willing to put it on the ballot.
Thank you. I will say that something that has stood out was the, the conversations regarding the, the confusing language. And one of the things that was discussed in CAC is in considering April versus August. If you put it on the April ballot, will people that are opposed to a tax increase get confused and not know the difference between the bond and between Prop C, and vote no on both, and potentially affect the bond? Board Member Garrett?
That was my concern as well, you just said it, I was getting, getting ready to say that. I am looking at the financial climate that we are currently in, with the property tax issues of Jackson County, lawsuits looming. The bond issue is very important, and I'm fearful as well. And I, I didn't realize that there was confusion with the language. I, I had that same fear, was that we're gonna lose out on the bond trying to put both of them on the ballot. So, I'm, I'm not for putting it on the April ballot, the Prop C waiver.
Board Member Miller?
Thank you. I guess, you know, one of the things I love about this work that we get to do, we were elected to do, is being able to go into the schools and talk to the teachers, and, and be in their classrooms, and see all the incredible ways that they are impacting our students on a daily basis. To me, it feels like a slap in the face to not want to increase their salaries. I feel like we should always find ways to stay competitive and pay our staff. We, we certainly can't pay them what they deserve, because there's no amount of money that, that, you know, that we could pay our teachers, that take care of our students day in and day out. But we expect a lot from our teachers and staff, and I think we should commit to our staff to always take care of them. So, for me, I will be supporting moving forward with Prop C.
Board Member Johnson?
Just a follow-up to what Board Member Haley was saying, there are positions that we are not competitive. We're not, and so those are the positions that I'm concerned about, not being competitive. And how do we do that if we made it a, we made it a goal? And so how do we get there then, if we made it, if we agreed as, as a district that that was a goal, how do we get there?
How much money would it take to make those, those positions competitive?
Mr. Holder's working on those numbers for us for next month, he couldn't tell us today.
Okay.
And not because he wasn't prepared, because, yeah, that's, we just, we have to get more numbers, the data has to come in, because other districts participate.
He didn't have the data, it, it wasn't his fault.
Interesting.
No, it wasn't, yeah.
I, I would just like to add, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, we're, we're getting that data, because we have other participating districts, we have to get, we have to get all of that together. Everyone's not like us, but, yeah, it's just that, that's the only thing. And I get it, it's a struggle of where do we pull the money from? But, we're talking about really important positions, that are at the bottom, not in the middle, at the bottom. Talking about getting, not, so we have three, we call it like three tiers, bottom third, middle third, top third, we have positions in the bottom third. So, how do we get out of there, as that being one of our goals?
Board Member Myers?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. I do agree with Board Member Garrett, that the bond is important, and that it's, it's a continuous thing, just because it, it's like your home maintenance, where you, you get something done, and then you gotta turn around three years later, and you're on the next round of whatever you have to do, and that's, that's just part of it. But, I think that taking care of our people is equally important. And the, the Prop C doesn't have to run in April with the bond, that, that, it can, it can run in August. We have that option available to us. Likewise, I would also point out that in terms of educating the community about what it is they're voting for, there will be a committee, I think that's already kind of been tapped, and is just waiting to, waiting to roll, that, that'll be part of their job, is to educate the commi, the community as far as, this is what this says, but this, this is what this means, this is what it's gonna do, this is what it's gonna mean to you, this is how it's gonna impact you, and so on. And I just, teachings of, education's a funny business, because some days you go home and you feel like, man, I got as much out of this as any kid that came through my door. Some days, other days you think, oh my good Lord, what did I sign up for? You know, it's, it's one of those things. But, people like to say, oh, you didn't do it for the money, you did it for the, for the calling of life. I, I don't buy that logic. At the end of the day, the amount of time that we put in, I mean, we, we have to be able to see a path forward, and be able to take care of our families, be able to, you know, have a, a future outside of perhaps teaching at some point. I mean, it's, it's just like you all with your jobs, you, you, you've gone into them for various reasons to, to achieve objectives that you wanna get to at some point in, in life as well too. So, I just think that we, we need, I, I think we need to take care of our people, and let the community decide. And the community will speak.
Board Member Garrett?
Well, I do agree that teachers' salaries, the paraprofessionals, everyone down to, what'd you say, the third tier, everybody's important, and I came in to this position on full, full board with, with that, with making sure that our teachers were compensated fairly. I'm just wondering, should, right now be the time that we are putting two issues on the ballot? And what's to say that, I mean, cause I'm, of course I'm for compensating our teachers, I don't want, I don't want this to appear like she doesn't care about the teachers anymore, what happened? We care about the teachers, but what's to say we couldn't move it down to another ballot? So that it can be approved at a later time, to focus on the bond issue at this time?
Board Member Haley? Microphone?
Oh, sorry about that. First of all, let me be very clear about this, I do want our employees well compensated. I also want our students well-educated, and I want our citizens well-represented. So, I think there's three competing interests there, that we have, we've left out the citizens in this discussion. They, they get a representative, we represent their interests as well, in my opinion. So, I believe, based on the, the feedback I've gotten from the community, and I spend a lot of time out there talking to people, that I'm not personally convinced the bond will pass. There's still a lot of animus about what happened last year with Jackson County and everything like that. So, putting it on the ballot in April is a big no for me. But, I don't believe that not putting it on the ballot necessarily means we don't get to pay our employees well. I mean, this is a large district with a very generous community, and historically, they've been quite generous. And I believe that if there isn't disparity in the way we're compensating our employees, typically those things are hard to resolve in one year, that typically it takes a little while to, to resolve those types of discrepancies. So, perhaps this is something that needs to be dealt with over the next year or two, or something like that, I don't know. So, I just don't think putting it on the ballot in April is, is in any way a good idea.
Board Member Johnson?
So, in terms of the money and, what am I trying to say here? This isn't the first time it's, it's come up, Board Member Haley, so it's not like it's, it's new. Every year, Team Lee Summit tries to work on moving people, and moving us to competitive salaries. So, it's, it's not, it's not brand-new. We keep trying to do that, but in order to keep trying to do that, you, you gotta have more money. So, that's, that's the thing. So, saying, you know, look in one or two years, these staff members have already been waiting these years. Just to say, that's it. I will support this on any day of the month, any month. We could vote in July on it. I want to see it on the ballot. So I don't know, I was thinking to make an amendment to say for August, but I'm not confident in that. Because tonight's vote would be to vote to put it on April, but I can make the amendment to push it to August.
And then there will be a new board?
Right.
That can undo what you did. So I don't even know that, I don't want to take the wind out of your sails, but...
I totally get it, because I thought about that, too, and then it could just be in reverse. One vote tonight, and then a new board, and it could come back up. So, but I do support it for the very reasons that I decided to sit here. I want to get us out of the red. At a minimum, I want no red on our salary schedules.
Board Member Miller?
I am gonna, I'm gonna disagree with Board Member Haley on this one. I don't agree that we're leaving the citizens' voices out because I think putting it on the ballot gives them their voice to make the decision. I'm also not in favor of pushing it out because for what Vice President Slick just mentioned, but also that would cost the district, well, that would cost over $100,000, I think, for us to have a special election in August, so that, why would we?
We have a dumb one in August, but when I pulled up Independence and Blue Springs, you're right, they tend to be over $100,000 for their elections off April time. Our Apols tend to be 60,000 to 80,000, if I remember right, Mrs. Merk, because there's a lot of other things in April. August is a smaller one, so your bill tends to be bigger. So it's a little unknown, but I would say, yes, it's going to be over $100,000 to do it in August. We've already paid for the April one, so if you do this or don't do this, the bill's going to be the same for April because we have a board election, so we're already paying for it.
Yeah, and so that's the other thing, is like, it's hard enough to get people to go out and vote anyway, so having a separate election to do just this, I think, would be a disservice. So I really would support keeping it as recommended in April.
Vice President Slick?
Actually, I was trying to piggyback off of Board Member Johnson, Dr. Johnson. So back when we first tried, when there was the $12 million that we added to salary schedules, I remember it being very difficult to target specific groups, like what you're talking about. I'm not saying it can't be done. I'm really just kind of adding to the conversation because I agree with you. We had the same conversations when we were trying to figure out, for example, how to address assistant principals because that was the bucket of pay where they were so far lagging behind. And it was so difficult to try and address it because one of the issues that was brought forward is the salary schedule compression, you know? So I don't know how you, how this time around would be different trying to address it because you still end up with, well, if I increase this one, then from this position to this promotion is a very, very close, so there's just not a lot of difference. And so that's how you wound up with certain positions in administration receiving large percentage increases because we had to move other people up. So it just, it was just a waterfall. So I think it's going, it will end up being a larger pot of money even than potentially what Prop C could offer. And I don't, I don't have any planned comments with regard to this. I'm just kind of talking through what we, the issues that we had with the same conversation. Because I empathize, I agree with you. I think that we have portions of our salary schedules that are lagging behind the Big Six in the metro area. And it badly needs to be addressed, but it's just so hard because of how our salary schedules are set up. So I have no answers, only comments, but that's all I just wanted to put out there, that I empathize with you. I'm not on Team Lee Summit, but I do very vividly remember how difficult this conversation was because you wanted to have targeted increases to specifically address lagging salary schedules. And that just, it just didn't happen that way that we were set up, so, yeah.
And it's interesting you say that, Board Member Slick, because we're talking about the same group of people.
Board Member Johnson?
That was kind of what I was going to say, talking about a similar group. I wasn't here when that original 12 million was done. And the point you brought up, yes, those are the very things we are talking about. Just trying to find a way out of the red.
Board Member Myers?
Yeah, just a couple of things. We have to try. That's why we're here, is we have to try. And I know what those people do every day. And I was shocked today's conversation to hear about the number of those assistants that are in serious conversation with themselves or their spouses or their buildings about, I'm thinking about going back into the classroom. Because I'm not making more money doing this, but I've got all these X number of days and all this X number of on-call, this, that, and whatever. And, I mean, I know how hard people work to get into those positions. And I wish kids didn't have as much need as they have today, but we do. And we're here to provide it for them, which means we've got to have those additional adult supports in the building. And we have, we have to try. And that's, in essence, what this is all about. It's what's good for kids.
Thank you. Okay, some things that I wanted to note is that I still share the concern that was brought up by members of the CAC that putting Prop C on the ballot at the same time as the bond could cause confusion. It can mess with the messaging, and we really need the bond to pass. There are things that have been needed for a long time, including, you know, ADA accessibility and some building changes that I would hate for that to get derailed because of any kind of confusion or just frustration with tax increases because of them getting lumped together in the April ballot. I do think if we looked ahead at maybe putting it on the August ballot, I would ask if the levy transfer didn't fix the issue that Team Lee Summit is talking about when we, when we had the significant amount that was given the first time. If this didn't fix the issue, would the Prop C money fix the issue? Because I think that would be really relevant to the conversation. If we, if it does not pass today and we bring it back later to talk about potentially putting it on a future ballot like August, if Team Lee Summit was to be able to say, yes, if we receive this amount of money, this is how we are going to fix the issue, this is where we are going to put it and give an outline, I think that could potentially really add to the conversation and quash some of the, some of the questions. Because I sit here and think, we've done this before, we gave that money, and then we're still sitting here today and it wasn't fixed. So why would it be different the next time around? So knowing what Prop C potentially could bring, if that was a part of the conversation before we have the conversation again about putting it on the ballot, that could contribute to the conversation in a really good way, I think. Oh, Board Member Miller?
This is, I have a question for you, Dr. Buck. Where do our first-year teachers sit in terms of salaries compared to surrounding districts?
We can certainly send it to you. Dr. Carlson may have it on his computer. He can pull it up, come over here and tell you. Because we, they spent a long time looking at that. I think I'll add to that, so like, we're behind Fort Osage, we're behind Hickman Mills, we're behind Kansas City. We're ahead of Blue Springs, although Blue Springs last night voted supposedly, I haven't seen this, but somebody told me to raise the base by $1,500, and then they're going to go ask voters to fund it with a levy increase. We've had several of our neighbors have either A, a levy increase in the past few years, or B, not do the voluntary rollback that we did. We had some multiple neighbors who chose not. When we rolled back 65 cents, they kept it. So that's part of it, too. So we can fix something in one year, but then our neighbors can react and raise more funds, and then we're back. So it's always a competition. And if one community is investing with increases by tax levy increases, it's hard because you've got to keep up with the Joneses or choose not to. So it's never going to be, you solved it and it's done forever. That will never happen. So, Dr. Carlson, I gave you enough time. I was trying to babble on.
I was going to say, I have the information. Erica, we're in the mid-third for first year, for the teachers, yes.
Do you, so I think I left one here, I don't know if it's still here, for you. Do you have the positions that are in the bottom third? Because it's not just APs, there are several positions.
I'm not, I'm looking at that whole document with everybody.
So what positions are in the red?
Substitute teacher, assistant principal middle school, assistant principal high school, principal elementary, interpreters, social workers, accompanionist, building clerk, bus aides.
And resource aide on the second page.
Okay, yeah.
I think there is an outstanding question I can answer, I think. I think we asked about teacher salary. The data we look at, we use a report that NEA provides. Currently, we are nine of 22 in starting teacher pay. The second column they analyze is Masters Step 10. They consider that kind of the middle of the schedule in a career, and we are 10 of 22 there.
Board Member Johnson?
That was an error, sorry.
Board Member Haley?
Yeah, Dr. Carlson, can you tell us the spread? What's the difference between us and, say, number five or number one?
Yes. Number one pays $48,150. We are currently this year $43,620. Number five is $44,496.
Okay, thank you.
For starting pay.
All right. Do we have any other questions or comments? Board Member Haley?
How do we look on the top end of the scale, Dr. Carlson, compared to the other 20 or so that you're looking at?
For teachers?
Yeah, for the positions we're talking about. Let's talk about teachers. Let's just use that one.
Teachers were number one at the end of the salary schedule or at the top. Some of that, you know, you can look at it at 40-step, we have 43 steps because we give all years of experience and don't have an end to our salary schedule. So that moves us to, we have a person on the 42nd step on our schedule this year. Last year, we had a person on 43. Some folks tell us, let's look at it at step 25 or step 30, but we're number one, we're very competitive there.
So our most senior teachers are the best compensated out of this group? The group that we're comparing to?
Yes.
Okay, so it's our, it's our entry-level teachers, beginning teachers, that we're lagging behind on?
Yeah, we're the middle third for beginning and middle of career.
Okay, so we just need, I mean, I'm saying that as a board, I would like to know how much money it's going to take to get us out of that tranche and get us up into another tranche. And I guess that's a Mr. Holder question.
Well, can I just interject for a second? Totally on board, look, I want us in the green in every category. But again, going back to one of our goals, if we want to get our admin out of red, like, I don't want to, I don't want to shift the conversation from one of the things that we said we were going to work on. But, yeah, just to say, we're in the mid with them. But can we get these few out of the red? What's the strategy to get them out of the red?
Yeah, I think, I think that's a legitimate question. We just need some quantification here so we know what we're talking about.
And we do have numbers. I don't know what's at liberty to share at this level, but we do have those numbers and we have those spreads and we have those things to look at. And that's how we're able to come up with a number of dollars that we need. We don't have that number for what you just asked for tonight, but that's how we are able to come up with what we need.
Let me ask you a question, Dr. Carlson. What percentage of our staff, our teaching staff, for instance, is in this bottom tranche? I mean, are we talking about 10%? Are we talking about 40%?
I don't want to guess at that type of question, but I'm going to show you a document, and I can get these to you.
Sure, thank you.
While you look for it, I think the average experience is 16 years for our teachers, the last time I looked. So kind of the middle of the schedule.
The document I'll give you, and this is what we call a scatter plot. It shows each teacher in a district and where they show up on our teacher salary schedule. This is one of the data sources that Team Lee Summit uses to look at. Red is where the frequency or number is higher, and blue is where it's lower. So you can just kind of generally see by column here, red's beginning teacher, and then it kind of flows through. But the majority of our staff is between steps 18 and 30 in the Masters plus 45 area. And folks kind of, as we described in that schedule, folks start out here, then they're kind of Masters plus 10, and they kind of move through the schedule during their career. We also have the phenomenon of, you know, we typically will hire more experienced folks. And now with the way our salary schedule doesn't have an end, we're also seeing more retirees come over from Kansas or KC Mo.
Thank you, Dr. Carlson.
You're welcome.
Vice President Slick?
So part of that was actually what I was going to ask, or I already knew the answer, but I was going to ask about the tenure of our staff. Because I think we have traditionally targeted a more experienced staff, and it's reflected in the average years of service of our teachers. Is that kind of, I mean, we attract a more senior educator, it seems like, that has more experience based off of our salary schedule.
That is correct. The majority of our hires have experience, although first-year teachers is increasing quite a bit. So we have 24 first-year teachers this year. I think my first year, it was in less than 10, I want to say what number it was. It was less than 10. So we are starting to rely on that more. The state of Missouri just released data on their last data set. They had 50.7% of all teacher hires were first-year teachers in the state of Missouri. So as the teaching, our veteran teachers retire, which is what 80, you know, 78% of our teachers we lose is to retirement, it's going to probably increase over time. And I think that's, that's one of the challenges Dr. Carlson has. He's had a few people turn him down for a first-year teacher, which he never used to have ever happen, and choose districts to our west who pay more.
Where do we stand in terms of benefits as a comparison to the big comparable districts in the area?
Yeah, our benefits are excellent. One, in the contribution that our board chooses to make for medical and the other insurances. I would also say our fringe benefits are something that the other HR colleagues in the area are like, we don't want to hear about it anymore, Carlson, because when you look at PDO buybacks and short-term medical leave, these types of things that other districts just don't have. But I'll also say, when we offer jobs, Dr. Devilvis and I will offer jobs, and we will talk about benefits and encourage folks to look at that. Generally, not everyone, everyone's situation's different, but generally, salary gets someone somewhere, and excellent benefits keeps them there, is a general statement that we use and talk about. But we do really emphasize, and that was an emphasis of Team Lee Summit several years ago, we really need to make sure we feature the fact that we have and commit much more to benefits than most districts.
And I don't want to get too down in the weeds. I'm just going to ask one question. When you have that conversation with somebody, I know a younger generation, to me, maybe doesn't necessarily think about benefits, right? They're thinking, what money am I getting right now? Do we quantify that for them? Like, we put it on a sheet of paper that says, if you go to this district, this is the amount of money you're going to save coming to our district. You know, do you put it in those terms so they can understand dollars and cents? Not just like a theoretical benefit that's, yeah, yeah, we'll talk about that when I'm old, kind of attitude? I got to laugh.
Yes, and I try to, we try to do it as succinctly as possible because when talking benefits, typically the more words you use, the more challenges you have to overcome. So my quick bit sounds something like this. You know, I understand you're weighing and considering all factors here. I would encourage you to Google LSR seven benefits, or I'll send you the link. You can take a look. Look at the benefits we offer. One quick example is we contribute on the plan that many of our folks are on, $180 a month towards a health savings account. That's an additional over $2,000 a year in compensation that gives you tax benefits. So be sure that when you're comparing the salary here compared to other places, that you're incorporating things like that, as well as, and I'll mention short-term medically and PDO buyback, but short-term medically, people don't see that or the need for that when they're on that phone call. But $2,000 towards a health savings account, that catches our attention.
Right. Okay, so just to kind of summarize, we pay our veteran teachers very well, so it attracts experience to this district. it attracts experience to this district. So that's where we focus a lot of our salary. We have a growing need for paying early teachers because we have a lot more teachers retiring, and we're going to have to hire first-year teachers. But we also have excellent benefits that other districts can't even touch. So we offer a tremendous package that's available to most of our educators while still needing to improve on certain target areas. So I think that's kind of the summary of the conversation as I understand it. So thank you.
Board Member Johnson?
And I would say just to add to this, and I know we don't want to say too much in the weeds, when we're attracting more experienced staff, that's more money. Like, it costs more to bring in a, a ten-year person, and we totally understand why they want to come to us, because we are at the top of the pay scale, and they know our benefits and our retirement packages are really good. So it does cost more to have those, even though I'd like to have more experienced teachers too. But yeah, you already said it, the younger people, trying to tell them about benefits, I don't know. They want, they, they see dollar signs. So that, I think that can be a tough sell, even though our total compensation in this district, I think, far outweighs many.
Board Member Miller?
I have one more question for you, Dr. Carlson. So as we look at, of course, we know we have the majority of our teaching staff are veteran teachers, are tenured teachers, lots of experience. Is there a point in the near future that we're going to be concerned about those tenured teachers being ready to retire and then having to replace them? Like, how many of our staff, would you say, and I know we don't have, how many of our staff would be, like, close to retirement? I don't even know if that's quantifiable, but...
It is hard to quantify. So, because retirement means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. So i- it's hard to know, and, and I think sometimes people know when they want to retire, and sometimes people know when they do, but they get there and they're like, well, I'm not ready to, I want to go year to year. There's, our, our retirement system has twenty-five and out, it has rule of eighty, it has some rule of eighty-six incentives, then it also has a thirty-two-year increased multiplier. And of those varies, variations, I mean, everyone's goals are going to be a little different, and someone's goals can change from year to year.
So I, I'm going to take a stab at a different way of answering that. Us in Liberty tend to have the lowest teacher turnover year after year after year, and it's not really close. Everyone else has got a higher teacher turnover. We used to be more like five to six percent teacher turnover with seventy-eight percent of retirements. Now we're more like seven, eight percent with seventy-eight percent retirement. So we're seeing our turnover rate increase some, and so is Liberty, but I think it's because we're getting so many veteran teachers, then we have them for less time, because they're not going to put, you know, Stacy, why don't you work thirty-one years? If Stacy started here now, she wouldn't do thirty-one more years, right? She would do a lesser amount. Like you said, he's got somebody who's on step forty-two this year. I don't think that person has thirty more years of teaching. They might, and I don't know, I guess, but likelihood they wouldn't. So you're right, we're seeing our turnover tick up a little bit because we're getting more veteran staff. The side, you know, the other side of that is, we're getting some incredible teachers with a lot of experience. So we're very happy to have them, especially in some of our more challenged areas like special education and stuff where we have a hard time finding enough candidates for. So we've hired some retired Missouri teachers under a provision from the state where they can come out of retirement and work, and, and we've hired several folks in special education department and also industrial tech, which are hard positions to fill sometimes.
Board Member Myers?
Yeah, I was just going to say, veteran teachers want to come here because we have good kids. That makes a big difference. You can't put a number on good kids to work with. So anyway, that's off-topic. I know we need to get back to what we're doing with Prop C, but I mean, that's why, we have good kids, so.
Thank you. So considering the past and, and what happened after the levy transfer with Team Lee Summit not being able to address some of the concerns, but now bringing it around again, I, I personally, I would not support putting Prop C on the ballot in April. But I would ask if, if Team Lee Summit, when they convene, if they can talk about both options, you know, with or without Prop C passing, how could we address these, these staffing issues to, to make adjustments to, to really address the positions that are in need? I know before we talked about, you know, special education positions or transportation aides, and there's some certain positions that are very hard to fill because we are not paying in a comparable manner. And I know we often talk about teachers, but there's a lot of different positions that are affected, and I really think it's important that, that Team Lee Summit has, has a discussion, or if not, if that comes to the board level, to really look at all these different positions, and are we, are we paying them what they should be paid, and what are, what are the different options that are on the table?
They spent several hours today doing exactly that, and they're coming back. I think it's the first thing they're doing at their next meeting in two weeks.
Yes, but I, I, I think having, having that before we're given or, or asked to make a vote, I think would be beneficial, because if I would have had that number today, and they said, you know, if we do this, this is going to happen, this is going to happen, this is going to happen, and it's going to fix all our problems, you know, that, that would be have definitely changed, you know, my position. But I, I don't see that today. And I, I would be very concerned that we're going to do the same thing again that we did last time. Board Member Johnson?
So I did just want to add, we do have less red now than we had in the past. So I don't want it to seem like that money that was given didn't make a difference. There was, there was less, there was more red in the past, and now we have less of it. Also, when it comes to salary, the reality is, it kind of is a moving target, because as we increase pay, it's like your, your competitors, they're going to increase too. So I don't think there's going to be a, this many millions of dollars comes to the district and we're going to get people out. We may have to continue to get us out as others see how to compete with us, like, would be with any other company, where we're competing for, you know, salary competition. It would be like anywhere else. So I don't think there's going to be a time where it's like, oh, well, we're done, we're out of the red for now. Maybe for now, but not to say, I don't want to set us up to say, we're never going to be in the red again, but how do we get out of it today?
Board Member Garrett?
Well, I still want to see the information from Team Lee Summit as far as how we can correct the salaries of the, of the positions that are in need. It's just, that is really important, I understand about the red, but solving the problem is a huge thing. Otherwise, we're asking the taxpayers to keep throwing money, throwing money, but we're never figuring out how to fix that at the bottom. I would like to see them raise up, and granted, other surrounding areas might be competitive, but I'd like to see them also be competitive after we fix the problem.
So with that, though, again, people get raises and things every year. There's not just ever going to be one solid fix. It's going to continue to change. We're going to always have to look at the salaries, are the people we're competing against. So even if we gave you a, let's say we give you a dollar amount, it would be a dollar amount, not would fix the prob, you know what would fix the problem. You want, you're asking for a dollar amount to decide to do this. We're going to be here again next year. We evaluate salaries every year intentionally, so we're always going to be having this conversation. This isn't going to be a one-and-done. Just want to put that out there. One time of giving money is not going to fix it. Cost of living goes up, other people start offering more money, other districts get more money, so we're always going to be having this conversation. It's not going to end.
Are there any additional questions or comments? Okay.
That being said, there is a motion on the floor that has been seconded to approve the resolution calling for a Prop C rollback election in April. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. All those opposed? Nay? All right. The motion does not pass.
Can I ask clarification, because a lot of things were mentioned about next August? Do we want to wait till the new board's in place to discuss this, or do you want to discuss it now, or do you want to bring it up at a future meeting about August? I just need clarification for when to bring it back to you, or not to bring it back to you.
Would we, do we have an opportunity for a work session where we could potentially talk through what comes from Team Lee Summit and then have more collaborative dialogue instead of a ping-pong discussion like this?
Yes, I think Team Lee Summit has three meetings to finalize what they're going to recommend to you in March. So it would probably want to be after that. They have a lot of work to do still. They spent about eight days working on this, so they, they spent a lot of time, and they asked for a lot of data, and Mr. Holder provides a lot of data for them. So if you want to do that, I think you're talking after March, so it will be with the new board, and I just want to make sure you guys are okay with that, if that's the will of the board.
As, as, yes. Speaking for me personally, I, I would think that that would be fair, because if this is going to go on the August ballot, then that would be the decision of the new board, because if we were to decide today, then they could turn and they would overturn that decision. So giving the new board the opportunity to have a work session, to hear the findings from Team Lee Summit, and then to be able to make a decision would be, I think, appropriate, unless someone says otherwise?
Okay, next up we have items of information, ten point zero one through ten point zero three. Do we have any questions? Okay, well then, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.